I get the annual honor of starting off. I will ask for nominations for the position of Board President.
I nominate Barb Rogers.
Mick, nominate. Anyone second?
I'll second that.
I get to do this-
I'll second that.
Ryle Craig feedback came in.
Yes.
I get to do this three times, so I will ask again for nominations for the position of Board President. Hearing none, I'll ask for the third time. Are there any nominations for the position of Board President? None? I'm going to ask for a motion to close the nominations.
I so move.
I'll second.
Cast a unanimous ballot. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thanks, Barb.
All right. Thank you, Board, for having the confidence to reelect me. We will now move to the position of Vice President, and I will ask for a nomination for Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Imert. Thank you.
As in what Nick said, I need to ask nominations three times. I have a nomination for Jennifer. Do I have a second for her?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. I will ask again nomination for Vice President. And a third time nomination for Vice President. Hearing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Jennifer Imert for Vice President. Can I have a-
I'll so move.
Okay. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Now we need to open nominations for the position of Clerk. Can I have a-
May I, President?
Yes, Dave.
I nominate Priscilla Swoboda.
All right, I have a nomination for Priscilla Swoboda. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. Again, nominations for Board Clerk. And a third time nomination for Board Clerk. Hearing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Priscilla Swoboda for Board Clerk.
I so move.
Motion made by Jennifer. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mick. And finally, we have the Treasurer. Can I have a nomination for Board Treasurer?
I nominate Pat Qualman.
I have a nomination for Pat Qualman. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Christopher. Nomination for Board Treasurer. And third and last time nomination for Board Treasurer. Hearing none, can I have a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Pat Qualman for Board Treasurer?
I'll so move. Go ahead.
Jennifer and Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and congratulations, Pat.
Thank you.
All right, we have a full docket, as we always do at the reorganization meeting. And so the next part of the agenda we are covering. Do we go right into the? Yeah, I guess we do. We go into the committees next. Okay, I did so that we could have a jumpstart on everything. Come up with the committee assignments, and Mick, I have a copy for you. Can you hear all right, Dave? Dave, can you hear me okay?
Uh, speak up a little bit if you can.
Okay, all right. As far as the Board Committee Assignments, Building, Grounds and Transportation, Chair Wessel, Swoboda and Rogers. Finance, Chair Qualman, Rogers and Wessel. Public Relations and Marketing, Chair Imert, Schmitz and Schley. Policy and Practice, Chair Rogers, Schmitz and Swoboda. Legislative Action, Chair Qualman, Schley and Imert. Curriculum, Chair Swoboda, Imert, Schmitz. Charter School, Chair Rogers, Schmitz and Qualman. And I have a new committee, actually sort of a resurgence of the Safety Committee, which I don't usually have a first-year board member as chair, but I can, considering your experience in the area and your background, I'm gonna have Chair Schley, Qualman and Swoboda. The main reason for that Safety Committee is, I mean, I would say, and I will hand this to you, but the immediate committee task is based on the information that we got after that bomb threat. The Board was very concerned to find out that even though the school operated really wonderfully, learned some lessons in doing it, but wonderfully once they were aware that there was a valid bomb threat. It turns out that the school was basically the last to know. And that put, you know, that is just horrible news to find out. I believe, I mean, the call went into the county, somehow it went out on all the shortwave radios, so fire and police and everything knew, but there was somewhere between 10 and 20 minutes before the school was actually notified, and it wasn't from the Sheriff's Department or the Chief of Police. So there was a huge breakdown there, and could have had just devastating results. I mean, 10, 20 minutes that were lost when there was a, it wasn't a drill, it was a real bomb threat. That's terribly frightening to even consider. So we have to, we have to figure out where the breakdown in communication was, make sure that there is a procedure in place that that does not happen again. Don't know what happened, needs to be investigated. Certainly, at that level, it's a board issue in terms of our safety of our district. So that's gonna be the immediate task of the committee. And then just the general committee task will be to review the general safety plans of the district and things and make recommendations, as you usually would as a committee for the 2022, 23 school year, in terms of just general safety issues. Public Relations and Marketing, there's also an immediate task. Plan a meet and greet opportunity for Jesse Brinkman to meet the community. So that's sort of an immediate one. And then the general committee task this year is gonna be more focused on public relations. Determining ways to expand and improve district communication and increase community involvement. Obviously, determining market, marketing strategies will continue to be a focus, but there has been a general feeling that has obviously been communicated to us that we need to be better at our outreach and our involvement of the community. And obviously, the pandemic didn't help that in terms of reprising kind of meetings, but we hope to get that turned around. So I will give this to you, Christopher, and Miss Tina, for as chairs, just in terms of those immediate and follow-up things. Okay. That's committees.
Do you have an extra one of those, or?
We can maybe make copies for everyone for closed. I just made it for her for minutes.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, I gotta get this.
Okay. Board Correspondent. Well, Pat, you do such a wonderful job. I'm thinking that-
You didn't ask me this year if I wanted to continue to do that, but I will.
Well, I am asking you right now.
Barb, do you want them to have their official presentation before?
Actually, yes, so that they don't have to stay, and let's do that.
Independent English, what is that?
And please introduce yourselves.
Jared.
I'm Scott.
I'm Ethan.
What are your last names? Jared, Scott, Ethan?
I'm Jared Young.
Thank you.
I'm Scott Tivon.
Thank you.
Ethan Hawke.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, we're gonna talk about our experiences in shop class. Um, well, my experiences in shop class have went well. Some of the stuff that I found pretty cool is that I learned new equipment, like new tools and stuff. Learned how to use, we have a laser engraver, we have plasma table, and CNC wood router that I've learned how to use. Then another thing that I have experienced with is that Mr. Abel likes to do project-based learning, which helps you figure it out yourself. He likes to do a fail-forward thing, where the problems that you have, he won't help you with, but he'll guide you, so then you have to figure it out yourself. And then some other stuff that I've experienced with in shop class is CAD. We actually had a fab lab, kind of like a fab lab, the other month or so, who made these metal flowers here. These I learned how to do on CAD, well, I made them on CAD. And then another thing with CAD is, that's the garage that I built, and, well, we used CAD and then cut it on the laser engraver.
Cool.
And then it also helped me with getting closer relationships with people I don't usually talk to, which, what I like about it is that people who don't know what they're doing, I can use what I know and help them and guide them. Shop class also opened up job opportunities for me. I had an auto upkeep class where we learned vehicle maintenance, and we also wired up some trailer lights, and that helped me figure out what job I wanted in my future and guided me to what I wanted. I was also more involved in the community. We had a bunch of fab labs that we did. I think we had to do three every year for WolfTech. And I was in WolfTech two years, I believe. I made this table in WolfTech. We actually made two tables. One was a glass top, this one has like a rising top.
Very cool.
And the fab labs are usually around 30 people, so it's helped me get involved in the community and got me closer to other people. And all the rest of this got me.
So how WolfTech benefited me, it kind of gave me more of a on-the-job experience, so I got to actually, like, walk through everything. So this payloader bed here, we actually had assemble it, load it into our own trailer, drive all the way to Sturgeon Bay, and then assemble it there. It also helped me pick out a future that I would like to do in the future. So for example, blueprints in shop class, it led me to kind of wanna be an architectural designer because I kind of like doing that kind of stuff. And then in auto upkeep, like Jit was talking about, we had a unit where we had to wire trailer lights, and that led me kind of to wanna be an electrician, have an idea out there. And then in my family, we've always been part of the HVAC, like, career area, and job shadow. I went to NAPA, and we kind of, job shadow, it's always been something in the back of my head, if I have nothing else, just choose HVAC business. And then backseat with tools and machinery, some of my favorites would be the Vansaw, which we had to use to cut out all the oak leaf chair there. And the sander, which basically we had to use for everything to sand, all the pieces down, make sure they're all smooth. And then the drill press, we're currently using that right now in a project. We're making a king and queen size bed frame, a cedar, sweet cedar bed, for, I believe, Mr. Abel, I'm not quite sure. And then some tasks that came naturally to me during tech ed was working with other people. I worked with Mitchell, Jacob and Aubrey. They kind of just welcomed me in and, like, taught me how to do stuff, let me do my own thing. And I also learned how to understand blueprints more. So my first week or two in WolfTech, Aubrey and all them kind of just told me to do the blueprint stuff, like, understand, get more involved. So I learned that much more. And then problem solving, you can't go one project without having to solve a problem or something messing up. So you always have to find a way to overcome that problem and figure out a new way to fix it. And then working with new tools, when I came up to the high school, I didn't really know any machinery or tools to use, so I kind of just had Jacob, Mitchell teach me them and mess around with them and figure out what I'm doing by myself. And then something that I struggled with in WolfTech is my self-confidence. Sometimes I, like, get told to do something and it's all by myself, and I get scared to, like, mess up, 'cause I may ruin the whole project or something like that. So I always wait for, like, adult supervision and step-by-step so I don't tend to mess it all up. Then I'll leave it to Ethan.
All right, why is WolfTech important to me? Because I'm able to work on things that I love during school, and I've been able to do projects for the community. So two examples of that is bookshelves. Book, uh, Book Horn in Algoma called the school and asked if we could assemble some bookshelves for them so they could expand their collection on their bookshelves, or their books. And then Arts Night, I was able to teach the community on how to make some flowers by welding. And then how has WolfTech helped me? I have used skills that I've learned in class on the farm every day. So all the skills that I've learned in WolfTech are essentials for farmers now, like welding and torching. All this has given me lots of opportunities that I would not have had without it, like welding at school. So I would have never been taught to weld or torch before I come into the tech ed program. Working on projects for the community, an example of that is building the bookshelves, and then being able to have to work on, or being able that students, I should rephrase that. Students' work that they've created, you know, it's kind of neat that it's being showcased to the community, just to see what the projects that high school has been doing. And what is my favorite part of WolfTech? Favorite part is being able to finish projects and see the work payoff in the end that we've created. And then I enjoyed learning how to weld, torch, and be able to create things that I, create things on my own that I've never been able to do without being taught in the tech ed program.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Sounds like you did some very good things and learned a lot.
Question. Can anybody purchase any of those things? I mean, that table with that, with that wine barrel, that was quite incredible.
Well, those are all sold right now.
And those chairs are amazing.
Most of that's all sold right now, but-
Oh, so it is, I mean-
Yeah, we do sell it all, most of it.
Okay.
And then what does the money go for?
I believe it just goes right back in the WolfTech program. Every year we have like a fun day where we, I think it's usually Six Flags that they go to.
Okay, okay, good. Yeah.
Most of the time, people will order stuff and they custom build it to order, so.
Oh, so that's what people would have to do?
Like, most of those projects are all custom-built to order. They started with the Wisconsin Edarondak chairs, but like, that one, the oak leaf, is obviously somebody wanted a different thing. So it's easy for them to, you know, apply different designs to their projects. I think the bed is, was for a teacher and for basketball, or is it a museum?
Yeah, it's a museum.
So they saw their work at one of the shows or trade shows or whatever, so it's actually kind of cool. So like, the center of the wheels is like dog dishes, right? And then they created the wheels and designed it all, so it's all kind of just, you know, readily available products that you kind of build something cool out of, so.
Good work, you guys. That's amazing.
I know a little boy would like a John Deere one.
I'll bet you you could talk to these guys and they'd know how to build you one real fast.
I have to.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions for these young men? Thank you for sharing with us tonight.
Good job. Yeah, you're talking really fast.
Thanks for coming, boys.
Yep, you did a good job. All right. Yeah, we're gonna have to back up for those.
We have to back up a little bit.
Yep, we are.
Yep, okay.
So that's the only presentation, is that correct? Okay, so I jumped ahead with these two different cheat sheets. It's a little hard. We have to go back, and Mick, you need to do roll call.
Oh, all members present, Dave via Zoom.
All right, and then, all right, okay, and now we're back on track. Okay, and yes.
Well, Governor Evers has been quite busy with this period. Vetoaded more bills than he passed. One, a couple of them that he vetoed, the one that we were keeping an eye on was what they called the Parents' Bill of Rights Bill. That one was vetoed. We kind of figured that that one, that one wasn't going to make it. An interesting, another interesting one that did not pass was, they wanted to take Milwaukee Public Schools and reorganize them into anywhere from four to eight different school districts with their own separate school boards. And that one, that one didn't go either. What also was got, what got vetoed was eliminating the income limits for primary choice programs, because that was on the docket, and that, that did not go. There's a number of them, but they, they didn't pass, so. He did sign a few that would pertain, you know, from education. One has to do with independent charter schools authorized by tribal colleges. The one, a substitute teacher permits, permits issued by the Department of Public Construction. If you are in a teacher training program, you can, and you meet certain requirements, at least 20 years old, enroll in a teacher preparatory program, you will be able to get a licensure to for substitute teacher, which will help out immensely. There's one, microschools commonly referred to as homeschooling, if you have a pod of families, two to 10 family units. That one was vetoed. See, there was more vetoed than were passed.
But that was just to change the name, wasn't it?
Right, but it was-
From homeschool to-
Yeah, it was vetoed. It was vetoed. What else went into law here? Oh, signed into law, there, sudden cardiac arrest during sporting is happening quite a bit these days. So the DPI says you have to have informational material and give that to the coaches and, you know, different, sudden cardiac arrest during activities, and we have to have, we have to have the coaches know and other, like, all school with it. There's a new law that would add September 11th to the list of special observance days for schools and to honor law enforcement and firefighters who respond to such events. I find it almost sad that we have to have a law to do that, but it is what it is. And then Governor Evers announced that he is going to put some money into Get Kids Ahead Initiative, and basically it deals with mental health. There's 450 local education agencies that are gonna be awarded money. Our portion of that was $19,440. He also included $5 million investment to make telehealth services available, which would include mental and behavioral health services more accessible to people. And then on the federal side, Secretary Miguel Cardona, Education Secretary, called on the stakeholders to make the American Rescue Plan Act and use that, some of that money to address the widespread teacher shortages. There's different things that he, you know, we could do, establishing teachers as a registered apprenticeship, establishing partnerships, things like that. Otherwise, it's been pretty quiet in Madison.
Well, there.
They're all, they're all, they're out of the office. Yeah.
Yeah, they're not doing any work right now, so, okay.
Okay, so Barb, Pat is the correspondent?
Yes, she graciously agreed to be part, and was all ready for it, too.
I wonder why.
All right, let's see. CISA VII Board of Control Representative, who serves as the delegate to CISA Convention. Mick.
Yep.
Would you-
Don't mind at all.
All right, wonderful. And then Boards Secretary, would you be willing to continue the duties as-
I'll continue all of that also.
As clerk, okay.
I'm starting to get good at it.
Excellent.
Starting.
Practice makes perfect, right? Okay, we did the Board Committees. All the ones listed, plus the new Safety Committee. Delegate and Alternate for WASPA Convention. I am thinking, Jennifer, you should be, if you would be able to be a WASPA delegate, would you be willing to be one, or, or a?
Last year, you could attend virtually, which is what I did for CISA. And I did this year, too, which was really nice.
I'm hoping that this year we are able, as a Board, to go to convention. That's the other thing. I mean, I guess, now that I'm thinking about it, the sessions are super helpful for relatively new Board members, and the Delegate Assembly takes about half of a day out, doesn't it?
Well, you know, when you, you can sit and talk an hour over the words will or may, which, which one to use.
Okay.
Yeah, it does take a little bit of time.
And I will be the delegate, but would you be willing to be an alternate if I can't do it? Because if we can go to convention, I'm hoping you will be able to do that and could take advantage of, you know, several sessions during the time that the Delegate Assembly is arguing over will or may or whatever. Okay, wonderful. Depositories for school funds. I need a motion to retain the following depositories for school funds. Associated Bank, Nicolay Bank, Bank of Luxembourg, American Deposit Management Company, and the Local Government Investment Pool.
So move. Pat?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Pat, seconded by Mick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Davis and Cooltholz. Oh, yeah, that SC always throws me off. Davis and Cooltholz, C, and the WASPA Attorneys for School Matters.
I so move.
Motion made by Jennifer. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, time and date for school board meetings. Has 5:30 worked out for people, and does 5:30 work out for you, Chris?
Yeah, I'm sure it'll work.
Okay. Then we will continue at 5:30. I was looking through the calendar in terms of-
So still the fourth Monday?
Fourth Monday, 5:30. And I'm thinking, the only one that I could come up for sure was December, because the fourth Monday is the 26th, so that's not gonna be good. So moving December to the 19th?
Okay, and Christmas Vacation will be the 22nd through, yep, that would be good.
Was there anything else that anybody?
What about the spring break next? When is that?
After this.
Did we set that? Okay.
Easter is the 15th, so that doesn't conflict with the fourth Monday, which is like the 22nd.
Okay, I'll see, one, two, three. And Thanksgiving should not be a problem?
No, if you're gonna go to the game.
One, two, three, we'll be back, right?
He's talking about Packer games.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, maybe Packer games. Yeah, are there any? That I, that I'm not sure about. So have we agreed that it's just December, switching it to the 19th?
Looks like it.
At this point? Okay. All right. So the fourth Monday every month at 5:30, except in December, it'll be the 19th at 5:30. To this. Okay. We've got the board correspondent report. Did you have a report from CISA?
Yes, I actually, I was, I attended via Zoom again because I was down in Florida with the kids. Alamo received a little over $19,000 for mental health, so that's good news. Also, CISA VII is partnering with Aurora for a student and family assistance program. They started it with like two districts, one being Green Bay, and I'm not sure of the other one. But now they realize that there's much more of a need and they're looking to expand, so they're trying to get some staff added so they can reach out to other districts. It would be for the complete family, so each family member could get up to four free sessions. There's this, talked about the shortage of bus drivers that is all over the United States. And it also leads kids to driving themselves to athletic events, we're finding out. And I, I didn't realize there is not a state statute to provide, that we have to provide athletic transportation. I don't know, I don't know if I would want everybody driving, you know, but they suggest doing separate contracts for your van drivers and your bus drivers, which, you know, we, yeah, it's pretty much.
I think we get creative.
Also, the Green Bay School District is piloting summer camps for kids for computer science. It's no cost to the students, they're going to see how that goes. WSB is also concerned about the teacher shortages and the athletic official shortages, because that's a huge problem, too. And they are also deciding on whether they're going to stay with the NSBA after the controversy. I think they probably, we are probably going to drop their, their affiliation with them. That'd be, I think that's my guess, but it was under discussion. That's it.
Okay, questions for Mick? All right, we'll keep going. Student Representative Report.
All right. First thing is Lily Jo Bello has created her own podcast focusing on mental health, which that's super cool. It can be found on Apple iTunes or iHeartRadio. And then episodes will be posted weekly about her discussions. Softball is two in one, baseball is two in one. So they're all like trying to compete with one another, both softball and baseball, see who's better. Track and Field have their, have a meet tomorrow in Peschigo, which is going to be freezing, but it's, it's a meet. And then we also have a meet in Okalo Falls, the Okalo Falls International. And Mr. Schmann was saying that that's like the longest, like, tradition that they have, it's like 69 years or something like that. So that's pretty cool that we're still going to that. CAP classes are coming to an end. And then AP tests are coming up in the month of May. I think AP Environmental is May 2nd and AP Bio is May 11th. Band and Choir had a successful trip. Mine is some minor bus issues. And then graduation is around the corner and all the seniors are having mixed feelings about it.
Because they don't want to leave?
Yeah, and change is coming and people are, there's a little change. But it's a good change, so.
Yes, well, I consider it a credit to the staff and the teachers that the seniors aren't ready to just like blast off and run as fast as they can, which sometimes is the feeling. So, thank you, Julie. Any questions for her? Okay. All right, misconceptions and rumors. I've got one that I just have to address because I can't believe that it just keeps resurfacing. And that's the rumor, the furry rumor. And those who are not aware of what furry is, because I had to learn it myself, just fairly recently, and I asked Dave about it and he was like, what the heck are furries? Apparently, there are rumors going around that our school district, as well as other school districts, have students that have taken on the persona of dogs and cats and speak in bark and meow and use litter boxes. As absurd as that sounds, it has circulated. And adults have circulated it further. And I guess what concerns me the most about it is that something at that level of a, sort of in my mind, absurdity, the fact that adults would spread it versus just calling the school district and saying, I just heard this, what's going on? You know? I mean, that, it just makes our school district look bad. And so, obviously, we do not have any such student as a furry. We did have, I understand, a litter box in our AVA classroom earlier in the year because we had some kittens, four-legged furries, that were using a litter box. But that's as close to, you know, this school having a litter box. We absolutely would not be able to teach students that were not willing to communicate in English. And as far as I know, I don't know any district that actually has that problem. But the problem of the rumor going around has been hitting lots of districts. And it's, it's just too bad. It's a sensational thing. I haven't heard of one place that actually says they've actually dealt with the problem. And certainly, it wouldn't be anything that we'd be able to tolerate here, so. If that calms anybody's mind, if they were thinking that we were going to indulge that kind of behavior. But again, please, if you hear anything out there that makes you question something happening in the district, just please communicate with the district. Communication goes both ways. All you have to do is ask a question and you'll get the answer, so. All right, that's the only one I have to talk about. Public participation, did anybody sign in to speak?
Nope.
All right. Well, under Board President Announcements, I'd like to welcome Board Member Christopher Schley to our ranks. And I would also like to thank Joanne Wiener for her many years of service to this board. Okay, Administration Reports.
First thing on my list is setting a Finance Committee meeting for June. My June is pretty packed, so it would have to be the week of 13th through the 17th. Obviously, the board meeting is early into June, so really any time that week would work for me. Moving along, 2022, '23 budget closeout. Obviously, every year, we kind of shut things down as far as new purchases and things like that after April 15th, just because we have to have the time to make sure everything kind of goes through and we know where we stand. Like I've been saying all year, I, I can't find another school district in our financial position, so that's, you know, a testament to the people that work here and the things that we're doing. It's also a piece of just knowledge that, you know, we're knocking on close to 500,000 of added revenue that we didn't think about last year. So that's been a reoccurring theme, you know, over the years. And that certainly helps this district do the things that we're able to do. Certainly allows for, you know, innovative things to happen. And it's a lot easier to balance your budget when you have an extra half a million dollars laying around.
And you're talking about grants that we've received as well as.
About anything, grants, the mental health thing, you know, the $94,000 something that we got from DPI. There's always things that are kind of happening, coming in and then, you know, the grant pieces help with that. So, you know, from my standpoint, I think the district is in a really, really excellent position. That being said, obviously, we have to get our tentative budget going for the '23, '24 school year. So right now, the administrators have submitted their, you know, basically requests or items that they would like to see in their quarters for next year. Once we get that data entered, then we will review it and see kind of where it all shakes out and if we have to, you know, make changes or add things or take things away, we, we will do that. And then we will obviously be in the month of June presenting a tentative budget moving forward, which you all, as well as I know, they're just numbers. They change a lot as we go throughout the summer and then obviously into the fall. So that's just the timeline of how, how that's going. Mary from Barrett has put together a timeline that everybody's kind of following, so. That is going well. Neola policies, I'll be the first one to admit, you know, two years of COVID, Neola policy updates, not on the priority list number one, nor was it on priority lists for many school districts. So that being said, I am right now going through and updating them. And we will probably schedule a committee meeting probably early May to just look at them because you'll get some updates on things and then you'll get a mass update. So if you're familiar with Neola, you can't go in and change their policies or else you aren't covered by them. So what I'm doing right now is they give you options to, to choose and I'm just going in and clicking options. But we will then have a mass update here before the end of, of June. So, which, you know, in my 11 years here, I think we've come a long way from.
I would agree.
The binder that was that thick in 1975 and '80 and all that stuff, so.
And trying to keep it updated.
It was impossible, so. Neola's been, you know, a great thing for that, so. Staffing, obviously, it's an issue for everybody, not just education. In my honest opinion, I think the state could be doing a lot more. There just aren't people.
Right.
And then when you do find people, you know what the next question is. If you read the newspaper last week, Gibraltar now is going to pay starting teachers over $50,000 a year to start. So.
Would you say that again?
So, starting new teacher will earn over $50,000.
Where?
In Gibraltar, next year. So we were for a long time, when we moved to $40,500, we were right in that top, you know, range. Obviously, we are not in the top range anymore. And a lot of what we're seeing now is, obviously, new people coming in really don't care about what your salary schedule looks like because they're going to ask you what they want and you can either take them or not. So this is a new, new way, new realm, and that's going to have a huge impact on people that have been here five years, 10 years, 20 years. And all of that's gonna, you know, have to be thought of as we, you know, go down this road. But I also don't blame somebody that's got 10 different job offers for knowing their value.
Do you know how much of a jump that was, a hand?
$10,000 probably, they're probably very close to $40,000, too. But remember, they spend over $20,000 a year per student.
Yeah, they have a whole different.
This much dating.
Yeah, they have a whole different.
It's hard to compare their district to the rest of the districts.
I just say that just because I think we would be foolish to think that that's not our labor market, because it is.
It is.
But, you know, it's, it's going to be a balance, right? Because that is middle of the road for our compensation matrix here.
And how many positions do we have open right now that we need filled?
A lot. So it's, it's just difficult, you know? I can tell you that you get two or three applicants and one is worthwhile interviewing. That's a far cry from when I applied to be a teacher, is 200 applicants. So it's a, it's really tough. And then, you know, I have issues with just state licensing and how, you know, they obviously see this going on in every school district in this entire state, yet to license people and you can ask any one of the administrators, it's next to impossible. It doesn't make any sense, okay? And like Tech Ed is a great example, right? Poor Matt, remember that, when he came in here? Had to do 75 credits in two years to become a certified teacher. Now you can literally go and take a test and be a certified teacher the next day.
Except for Mr. Carl Kramer in FIAD.
Right.
He is struggling.
Right, somebody that has, you know, you know, advanced degrees in sports medicine and kinesiology, right? He went through this in other areas, right? So somebody with a master's degree cannot teach FIAD, even though they can be a personal trainer and run a wellness center, can't teach FIAD. That makes no sense whatsoever. So I think the state has a long way to go in addressing this problem. And I think they're just, they're already so far behind, I don't know how you, how you catch up on things. Because it's not, it's not like people are, you know, beaten down the doors to come and work in education right now. It's not the greatest place on earth. So I, I just, something to keep an eye on and, and look. And I think we've done a stellar job of growing our own for a long time. And, you know, you've seen that this year, where we're hiring former students is, because, you know, you have to do that stuff or else you just really don't have a chance. Which kind of leads me to my last name, Educational Partnership with Concordia. So obviously, they're putting their, their name in the hat just for having relationships with schools so that if you do have individuals that want to get master's degrees and admin licenses and certain other specialist license, we can, you know, give them a tuition break and if our, some of our teachers are qualified or administrators could potentially teach classes for them and so on and so forth, so. It doesn't cost us anything, it's just a, on our behalf, trying to give our staff members an opportunity to get licensure. This is something that Andy's a part of.
Yep.
So I think it's just a no-brainer for us to support individuals that are doing the best that they possibly can in finding a system that really has no, you know, no kind of flexibility, you know? It's tough, tough, tough.
Yeah. Questions or comments? Okay, Committee Reports. Board of Campers, who do you make?
Okay, hang on just a second, I'll find it here. Okay. We met on April 7th, a Thursday after the election, at 9 o'clock. Allison, Demice, Jennifer, Emert, and myself. The canvas of the April 5th spring election was conducted. Canvas reviewers, inspectors, statements for each voting entity, reviewed certification of each voting entity, and added ballot counts for each voting entity. No voting irregularities were found. All votes were verified and reviewed. Total votes were Christopher Schley, 722, Barb Rogers, 651, Shannon Larson, 411, Joanne Wiener, 629, Dan Haas, one vote, Rebecca Watbottoms, one vote, Gil Hawk, two votes. And we had three no-name votes. So they must have wanted to put a write-in, but then didn't write anybody in. So. So it removed Emert's second to adjourn, all yes, motion carried at 9:17. So everything was all in order.
Okay. Current COVID statistics, zeros, that's what we like to hear. Specific items for discussion, staff appreciation. So I'm thinking that, and you guys can give your input on this, and we also have some of those that were involved and actually. and we also have some of those that were involved and actually from the audience. I think when we had food catered in and we served it at different lunchtimes at the schools, that, um, that was enjoyed, was it? I mean, I.
Definitely was, yeah.
I mean, the whole point is, we want to do something that isn't an imposition. I mean, we've done things in the past where we've done it after school and had a dinner and things, but the feedback we got was that so many staff couldn't attend because they were involved in sports or other kinds of things, and it also extended the day for people who wanted to just be able to be done with their day. So we started doing the lunches, and then, of course, the pandemic just sort of came and changed everything. So we tried the box lunches last year. But I think having actual catered food in and having a few board members at each school to help serve and greet and thanks and, and give, I mean, did that work out nicely? For those of you who.
She's saying, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that was the feeling that I got when we were doing it, is that people liked that setup. So, um, so we'd have to figure out a date that works for, um, and then we'll figure out who we should order from, but we can work those kinds of details out. So.
Next Wednesday would be pretty tough.
Right.
The 11th or.
11th or the 18th? Oh, nice.
Um.
11th maybe then?
You tell me. What works for people, 11th or 18th?
Mondays because we don't have.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that works for me. I could do either. Oh, well, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you can't, you can't, so.
I used to have that problem too.
Yeah, we all had that problem at one time, but. Okay, so what were the timeframes at the elementary school that worked?
11 to 1.
11 to 1. And how about at the high school, I'm trying to.
11:30 to 12:30 probably would be fun.
Okay, so we will figure out and divide and conquer and I'll figure out something to order and, um, okay. All right. Moving on to action items. Need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of March 28th, 2022, the special school board meeting minutes of March 31st, 2022, the board of canvassers meeting minutes of April 7th, 2022. Also move. Motion by Ann, do I hear a second?
A second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dave?
I'm sorry, could not hear you, Barb.
I'm sorry, we just, we just had a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us. Motion made by Pat, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve DI to travel out of state to attend the global tournament in Kansas City, Missouri, May 21st to May 24th, 2022.
I still move.
Motion made by Chris, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann.
Just one question, how many teams are we sending? Two.
Nice.
Are they high school, grade, middle school, elementary school?
Two elementary school.
Two elementarys?
Elementary, okay.
Great. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve a $500 donation from Condon Oil Company for STEM.
I still need to move.
Motion made by Dave, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Pat. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. We don't have any recommendations for changes. Request for future agenda items. All right, none at the moment. So I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statute 19.85, subsection 1CICEFNI, for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staffing, resignations, and contracts.
I still move.
Motion made by Jennifer, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann, this is a roll call vote, Jennifer.
I.
Chris?
Aye.
Nick? Ann?
Yes.
Pat? Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I also say yes.